The Honorable Antonio Lewis. And to my left is the Honorable Mary Norwood. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
Can we have an adoption of the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Andrea Boone. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
At this time, we will have public comment. Our first speaker is Henri Jordan.
He that committed sinners of the devil, for the devil sent it from the beginning. For this purpose the sign of God was manifested, that he might destroy the works of the devil. 1 John 3:1. Christ came to destroy the devil's deeds. To do the devil's deeds is to declare allegiance to him, not to Christ. If you teach the devil deeds, you will be embunged to your enemies, like Russia and China, etc. And the nations were angry, and their wrath is come, at the time of the day, that they should be judged, and that thou shouldst give reward unto thy servants the people, and to the saints, and them that fear thy name, small and great, and should destroy them with the sword of the earth. Revelation 11:18. Those who have tried to destroy the earth will themselves be destroyed by God. And if a man lie with his daughter-in-law, both of them shall surely be put to death, and they have wrought confusion; their blood shall be up on them. Leviticus 20:12. The death penalty was also required for the following: adultery, incest with a mother, stepmother, daughter-in-law, or mother-in-law; homosexuality, insodiment, bestiality; incest with a sister or half-sister; and relations with a woman during a miserable cycle. You shall not therefore oppress one another, but thou shalt fear thy God, for I am the Lord, your God. Leviticus 20:17. The major concerns of the chapter are related in the words and phrases such as jubilee, return unto this possession, thy brother by wax and pore. And fear thy God. Jesus requires the practice of justice and punishment for injustice. We thank God for His word, that He looked out for us, we treated fairly, and not unfairly. But our flesh have big eyes and little uses; but Christ don't have big eyes and little uses, only flesh do. The biggest person, he said, "The word of God said, 'The righteousness exalts the nation; not sin, not pride, nor deceit, omission, per treachery, but righteousness.'" That's what we seek, to do right. I'm afraid to go to hell. What about you?
Jay Wesley Day.
Good afternoon. Once again, my name is Jay Wesley Day. And here I have an open letter to Madam Vice President Kamala Harris. Dear Vice President Harris, as a 47-year-old black man from the west side of Chicago, a current resident of Atlanta, and a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, I write with a crucial question. Will you stand for people like me? As a lifelong Democrat who has only voted outside party lines twice, I question whether my vote should support the Democratic Party in the upcoming election. Since 2018, I have faced a series of injustices in Fulton County, where I experienced a hate crime and retaliatory misconduct from local officials, particularly the Solicitor General Keith Gammage. In November of that year, I was violently attacked and left in a coma with my assailants caught on video throwing homophobic slurs and assaults at me. Despite this clear evidence, no one has been prosecuted after six years. Though two were indicted. Instead, Mr. Gammage dismissed charges against one of the main attackers and escalated my charge to "from a misdemeanor of fray," elevating it to the District Attorney's Office for a felony. Ultimately, it was dismissed by Fonny Willis, and I'm thankful for that. But the damage had been done to my life and career was irreversible. Because of the Solicitor General's actions, I have twice lost my job at Delta Airlines, casting a shadow over my family's life and well-being. Madam Vice President, Keith Gammage's persistent misconduct, coupled with the silence from Democratic leaders, has stolen my joy, my pride, and my hope. How do I find a place for myself within the Democratic Party under these circumstances? I have repeatedly sought support from Georgia's Democratic leaders, hoping for accountability and justice. Reverend Warnock, a leader and once my pastor, and also my frat brother, someone whom I trusted, dismissed my pleas, refused to pray with me, and publicly disparaged me by calling me a wannabe Jussie Smollett, then had me removed from the church's full line. Furthermore, Atlanta's mayor, Andre Dickens, retaliated against me by garnishing over $1,000 from my mother's bank account. The Democratic leadership here in Georgia, from the entire Atlanta City Council to the majority of Fulton County Commission, has offered no assistance or accountability for the justice I endured. Just finish this last sentence. Madam Vice President, can you understand the struggle for justice that black men face under prosecutorial misconduct? Thank you. I have a copy of my story, if anybody would like my open letter to Fonny Willis.
Mr. Adam Stevens?
Hello. I'm here on the topic of Justice for Devon Anderson. First of all, I have a question for the committee, which is, what are you doing to be in contact with the Georgia Bureau of Investigation to try and encourage them to submit their report? Or what are the legal impediments to you doing so? I and many others are not satisfied with the Georgia Bureau of Investigation's performance. It seems as though the council and Fulton County DA are sort of hiding behind the apron of "we're waiting on this report." So do you have anything that you can do to try and make that report come? Or are you at the mercy of Georgia Bureau of Investigation? And follow-up would be, you know, how much integrity do you think that organization has? So on October 22nd, I was at a vigil held here in Atlanta in honor of all those who have been killed and suffered in this country and worldwide due to police brutality. I helped Ms. Valerie Anderson, the mother of Devon, speak at that vigil by phone because she needed her rest, just like I'm here, in her absence. At that vigil, I met many family members and friends of people killed by police. If you listen to these stories and you think about the people in your life that you care about, you can start to think about the grief and terror that goes into losing a loved one to state violence and there being no meaningful recourse to the law to speak of. People's experiences vary, but that is some people's experience. Again, I'm going to flag you, Andrea, for introducing especially yourself as honorable. Thought that was a little rich. Again, you know, honor is something that I think we all strive for every day. I'm not here to say that I'm honorable and anybody else isn't. The point is simply that, you know, honor is not a word that we use and invoke, and then we just have honor. Honor is something that we cultivate when we do what's right, when we're willing to stand up to forces that present themselves as irresistible. And every day that we don't do what's right, when we cave, when we, you know, our courage is missing, unfortunately, that's when our honor can flag a little bit. And I think that we all need to look at that. It's not only a question, though, of honor. I think this is a question, not just police brutality, but the integrity of our law enforcement and military intelligence apparatuses. This is something that bears on all of our survival. I encourage the council to recall, you know, the rising escalating situation we have here in the world, where obviously issues that are much larger than your purview. But I encourage you to recognize that the matter of police brutality, the matter of Devon Anderson, is tied in with this. And I understand there are also many aspects even police officers deal with. For example, I know a report was submitted about their life expectancy, the stresses about the job. I am empathetic about that. But at the same time, you know, for people who just live and don't have institutional power to see that, you know, police officers kill people, don't get arrested, don't do their drug test, don't face any serious consequences, that looks very bad. And again, I think it's a sort of issue we should all be concerned about because this sort of organized violence, its target can change very quickly, especially in these times. So thank you.
Next speaker, Devin Barrington Ward.
Good afternoon. Before I speak, I want to play a clip that was reported from Atlanta Community Press Collective regarding an incident with APD and Stockton City protesters in 2022. So what that footage is from is from a scene where APD, along with Georgia State University Police, were engaged with folks who were protesting the proposed project in 2022. The officer who is speaking is Jessica Bruce, who is now a deputy chief, I believe, over training and professional development. At the time, she is encouraging the Georgia State Police Officers to charge the group with felonies and acknowledges that it's a reach. Two days ago last week, Fulton County prosecutors dropped those felony charges because they didn't see enough evidence to charge those individuals with felony burglary. I am concerned. And before folks who are members of law enforcement get it confused, this is not about being against law enforcement, but this is for being for public safety. Public safety is not having law enforcement officials in leadership who are encouraging other agencies to overcharge individuals, knowing, acknowledging that it's a reach. Why is that acceptable? Why is someone like that serving in a leadership capacity around training and professional development? That doesn't make sense. And so it is connected to the Devon Anderson issue because, again, to remind folks who are in the room, we have an officer who was on, had previous DUI charges, was on probation, had previously been investigated by Atlanta Public Internal Affairs for alleged domestic violence against another APD officer that he was in a relationship with. Why is that acceptable? Why is that the standard? How are they supposed to be the authorities for public safety when we are seeing some real instances where their behavior runs antithetical to public safety? We need the Public Safety Committee to start asking some really tough questions around why is this behavior acceptable? What in the training guidance is allowing this? And on the issue of Devon Anderson, we are hiding behind the GBI investigation for the murder charges, but that has nothing to do with the administrative charges, the administrative investigation that APD can engage in right now. This is someone who went over, who, again, who had DUI charges, again, who was on probation, who didn't notify the probation officer or post about their arrest like they were supposed to. Someone who had been investigated previously by Internal Affairs for domestic violence against a coworker. Why are we waiting for a GBI investigation on a murder charge when there's so many instances here that show that this person is not worthy of the level of protection that it appears that APD and the city is willing to extend, Melvin Potter? I think it's ridiculous, and I would like for the committee to ask some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair, there is no objection from the committee. Can we take one of our communication items that's held for Mr. Shawn Norman?
Please proceed. Mr. Norman, will you come forward, please?
Item number 2124C1521, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens appointing Mr. Shawn Norman to serve as a member of the License Review Board. This appointment's for a term of two years.
Mr. Norman, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on this very important board to our communities.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Shawn Norman, a lifelong resident here in the state of Atlanta, active community member, a business owner that's in the city, own a program management company, and I look forward to serving on the board to help balance the business, the community, the residents, to foster great relationships, value transparency, and goodwill with the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the body? Move approval? Seconded by the Honorable Amir Faroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Norman, for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that takes us back to Section F.
We will now have a presentation, crime updates by the Atlanta Police Department.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me once again. I'm Deputy Chief Jason Smith, I'm over our Field Operations Division. Give a quick update on crime and a few other things, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. So last time I was here, we were at 5% down for the year overall. We continue to be in that same space, very satisfied with how things are looking. I believe last time I was here, we were at minus 13% for homicide. We're actually down at minus 15% now. For aggravated assault, the shootings, I believe we were down at minus 10% last time I was here. We are now down to minus 13%. So it's trending in the right direction. Obviously, we want these numbers to stay the same. We know how the holiday season, things are going to pick up, especially in the property crime section. So I just want to remind people, take stuff out of their cars, be cognizant of where they are and their surroundings, and please, if you see something, say something, as always. Want to encourage everybody to call 911 when they have that opportunity. So we'll continue on with a few other things. We have also had a very successful weekend in coordinating with both Spelman and Morehouse. Had great homecomings with zero incidents. There was a few parties we had to break up and some stuff spilled into the streets, but it was handled quickly and effectively, and very much looking forward to continuing those partnerships. Obviously, the last couple of weeks and into this week, including today, we've had multiple presidential candidate visits on both sides of the aisle. We continue to work with our federal partners and have had no incidents so far and have been very successful in those endeavors, and will continue to be up and through the election. So we'll see what that brings. I would like to give a few highlights. Last time I highlighted some field operations work, which I always like to celebrate my people. We're going to give some love to some other units right now. I would like to commend our narcotics unit, who served a search warrant at 8:35, Cameron Alexander. In that house, they found 66 grams of cocaine. So those of you that don't know, trafficking weight is 28 grams. So they have found 66 grams, which was quite a bit. Five people in the house were arrested. One person with 10 arrest cycles, including felony convictions. Another person with 19 arrest cycles out of the state of Georgia with felony convictions. Another person who had an outstanding warrant from Carroll County, Georgia. And then we had one individual who had outstanding warrant for burglary out of the city of Atlanta. So that was, not only was he in this narcotics house, but also a burglary suspect in another case where he had an outstanding warrant. And the fifth and final arrest was a woman who had an outstanding warrant for aggravated assault. That was also out of the city of Atlanta. So it was a commendable job by our narcotics unit and a very good hit getting 66 grams cocaine off the streets. And I would also like to commend our license and permits unit. They do a lot of work and a lot of important work, and they did an investigation at 9/11, Joseph Boone, and then they could suck with the Zone 5 CSU team, Zone 3 CSU team, also GBI, and also the lottery inspector. They raided the store after an undercover investigation. They were doing illegal cash payouts. The gentleman who worked behind the counter was arrested. The lottery machines were shut down and then seized by the lottery, by a inspector from the lottery department. And so they will be facing a hearing for lottery to get those machines back and facing charges from the GBI. So it was a very successful operation, and that was one we'd like to brag about for our license and permits unit. So with that, that was a very brief overview, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that we have today.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the body? The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
One, on looking at the Zone 3 report, feeling really good about crime in the district, or we need to look into it more. I'm looking at shoplifting.
Yes.
I say that because I'm able to talk to the folks at Kroger, and I know that the highest crime I have in my district is at Kroger.
Yes.
Mainly for petty theft.
Yes.
And I know they report them. And so whenever I see two in a week, I either think, crap, we're doing so good in our area, or something, there's a glitch here. And so I'm just, I'm looking at the, I've been watching it for a while, because I know I talk to Kroger all the time about some of their issues, and they're always talking to me about shoplifting. And so on here, it says we only had two shoplifting incidents in the entire district, I mean, entire Zone 3.
Yes.
And so I'm just making, either I feel really good, and I need to reach back out to Kroger and tell them that they need to look at their numbers, or...
I would encourage them to report when they're having theft, yes, because all we can say is from the report is two were reported. You are correct. So I would say if Kroger's not reporting them, or, you know, whatever that may be. Now, I'm hoping they didn't have any shoplifters.
Me too.
Certainly, if they did, we want them reporting that to us so we can investigate it, especially a lot of those petty thefts, as you know, they're recurring, right?
Yes.
Same people, they come back multiple times. So we'd like to get ahead of that if they are having those issues.
I just want, that way we can help them out a little bit. And lastly, the Jessica Broome, I want to know if this person is a trainer. I want to know if, because I think what I heard was very disturbing if she said, if this officer knew for sure that they would be overcharging folks, and she still wanted to do it.
I didn't hear anybody say anything about overcharging. I heard a 10-second clip with no context.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know where that came from, and I don't know what the entire, to contextualize that whole interaction, I don't know what that was. I haven't seen the entire video.
I'm Team U on it. I just want to make sure we can look into it. I think one of the, we had public comment today. The most common thing on today was the death of Brother Anderson, of Mr. Anderson. And so one of the things that was requested of us is we can, that Jessica Broome is a new trainer in the city of Atlanta, and that she said, let's overcharge. She instructed Georgia State Police to overcharge. That's what was explained to us. I just want to investigate.
That's not, I didn't hear that in the video.
Can we investigate it? I just want to know if we can investigate that. That's my only request.
Well, we can't make another agency charge anybody.
Yes, sir.
And if there's a charge, that has to be done, that has to be signed by a judge for probable cause on a search warrant. Now, if you're talking about charging somebody with probable cause on a search, that's different than a conviction from the DA's office, right? Those two separate things.
And I'd be more specific. So can we investigate whether or not what was on video, because I know we got the whole video, APD does, if we can investigate whether or not the officer instructed or said it, because if you listen to it, people are hearing different things. I want us to investigate it. That's all I'm curious about, want to make sure we're doing it right.
Of course, of course. That is paramount to everything that we do. We always want to make sure that we are on the right side of things.
And I want to be clear on my question, that way you can, so if we can investigate whether or not Ms. Broome said that, and if she said that was in, make sure we're talking to her about, because we don't want to intentionally overcharge people.
Of course, of course.
I want to know if we followed up with her now, since she's in training, she's training people, want to make sure that she, if she said that, if she didn't say it, God is so good. If she did say it, make sure we can tell her so that she would know now not to do that again.
Yes, we will get back to you on the findings of that. And then I do want to talk about one thing that I missed. The Center for Diversion Services opens today. We're very excited about that. That is, again, it's another tool in the toolbox that we're going to have to be able to, for some of these low-level offenders, for an alternative to arrest. So we're very excited about that opening, and we'll be utilizing that center, obviously, in the coming days, weeks, and months, and hopefully years.
I'll be there today. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. We all wanted to attend that ceremony that was held today at 1:00 PM, but this meeting was held at the exact same time. So we would like for our staff to work with those event organizers to make sure that members of the Public Safety Committee that would like to attend do have time on their schedules without conflict to attend the event that was held. This is a very important day. So please make sure that we speak with the organizers on that. Thank you. And we have been joined by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Our next presentation is Code Enforcement.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and other members of the committee. I'm Daphne Tally, the Director for the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Section. As always, thank you for this opportunity to allow us to come and update you on our activity for quarter three. Today, we're going to present or update the committee on our staffing levels as it relates to our code enforcement officers, our inspections, our compliances through the inspection side, as well as compliance resolution. And later, Captain Baxter will join me and update the committee on the safe and secure housing initiatives, as well as our code enforcement retreat. Our staffing levels for code enforcement officers, we continue to recruit to fill all of our positions, I believe, as well as the committee. Our goal is to assign a minimum of two code enforcement officers in those MPUs that require it. That is still our goal. Our staff continue to take advantage of our cross-training opportunities. We've hired seven code, I'm sorry, eight code enforcement officers, but we've also promoted seven code enforcement officers this year. Through our cross-training programs, we are able to cross-train our customer service and our admin team and our code enforcement officers. I have the opportunity to become senior officers, as well as supervisors, deputy directors, and possibly Director of Code Enforcement. Currently, we have 14 vacancies. Now, we do have five candidates in background. They've interviewed and they've moved on to background. We had two rounds of interviews last week. I believe we interviewed 15 candidates for code enforcement officers. Unfortunately, they were all not able to move to the second phase, but we're working with HR to gather more applications so that we can schedule those interviews next month, hopefully, to fill those positions. Our inspections, let's see, I'm sorry, I believe I skipped. There we go. Our inspections continue to increase. We were up 61% in quarter two from quarter one, and up 4% in quarter three from quarter two. And these are inspections at our single-family, multifamily, as well as commercial properties. Our compliance activity, our compliance activity also continues to increase. So with all the inspections that we're conducting, we're also closing quite a bit of our cases. I would like to add, in September, our staff worked three consecutive Saturdays to go out and re-inspect several of those properties where code enforcement had issued citations, and the owners failed to appear in court. They also inspected properties where we were unsuccessful at serving those citations. So a lot of those properties did come into compliance, and so that was the significant jump. In quarter three, we were able to close several cases from that. In quarter three, we were able to close several cases from that, those weekend details. Next is our compliance resolution activity. This is the administrative interim proceedings headed by Ms. Jocelyn Lous. Our demolition activity, you also have a handout that lists the addresses of the activities that we've performed, and then any upcoming activities. We've demolished 12 properties, including 900 Newtown Circle, which Baxter will talk about a little bit later. We have performed seven clean and closes, and also 30 clean and cuts. As you can see, we are doing more clean and cuts than clean and closes and demolitions. The picture that is on the screen is of a 36-inch white oak tree that fell from an abandoned property onto an occupied property. And our city contractors were requested to go out, cut, and remove that tree. And next, I'll have Captain Baxter come up and give you some updates on our Safe and
So good afternoon, Public Safety Committee members, Madam Chair, greetings. As today is National First Responders Day, I thought it'd be appropriate to thank you for your support of this great city's first responders that are out each and every day, to include our brothers and sisters in the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. So we appreciate your continued support. So let me start out with our biggest Q3 accomplishment as it relates to the Mayor's Office Safe and Secure Housing Initiative that APD's Code Enforcement Section plays a lead role in. And that is the final demolition of 900 Newtown Circle. So as you're aware, this property has been on the radar since 2018. It is located in District 1. You can see the breakdown of the timeline that we've gone through from the beginning in dealing with this property, which includes working with many different agency partners when we went through the relocation process and all that went into dealing with this property. This property is 22 acres. It's one of the largest multifamily locations in the city. This demolition that took place is the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Section's largest demolition project ever undertaken. The approximate time was five months it took to clean this property. And there was a lot of effort that went in from a lot of different individuals, not just code enforcement, but our vendor partners and the Mayor's Office. And as you can see here, where we are now with the parcel being completely clean, we do deal with some issues still with illegal dumping that we work with the, the zone on and trying to tamper down. But the property itself, as you can see, is clean and ready for its next, its next chapter in this city. So we're very proud of that. And you can see here, these aerial views of the property. So up next, you'll see on the next slide here, so these, as it relates to the Mayor's Office Safe and Secure Housing Initiative, so these are the current scheduled court hearings that we currently have. So these are the locations that we currently have in the pipeline as it relates to holding multifamily dwellings accountable for the conditions that we find them in and receiving complaints. We work with those dedicated attorneys and solicitors in the city solicitor's office, working with Mr. Carter and his team. And so you can see these run the gamut of different districts. And again, these are all the current locations that we have pending. Now, we do continue our monthly inspection details, our multifamily triage, where we reach out and inspect the different multifamily dwellings across the city. Those details continue. So just to finish up, we thought it was important to highlight, so the Code Enforcement Section hosted its first off-property code enforcement retreat. This was the first section-wide retreat that has taken place since COVID. And so it was important that we brought everyone together, looked at defining our mission statement, and making sure we reinforced our goals, and looked at our internal and external challenges as a group. And it was obviously a positive experience. The Code Enforcement Section currently runs the gamut in terms of who we have as employees from, it's multi-generational. So we have everything from baby boomers to, to Gen X, millennials, Gen Z. We have a lot of representation within the Code Enforcement Section when it comes to our code enforcement officers. We feel like this retreat was much needed and was a success. So with that being said, that concludes this quarterly update from the Code Enforcement Section. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the body? We would like to thank you all for being very responsive to the citizens in those surrounding MPUs in southwest Atlanta. The fencing at 3136 ML King Jr. Drive, Abbey Ridge Apartments, it is in poor, poor condition. So will we please have someone check on that, 3136 ML King Jr. Drive?
And we can actually provide an update on that as well.
Okay.
So let me introduce to you our program manager.
We know him very well. That is one of, that is one of our rising stars, and we are so proud of him.
We couldn't do it without him.
I just wanted to share with you, 3136, also 3144 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, both of those parcels make up the Abbey Ridge apartment complex. We have filed a civil case against that apartment complex. They will be in court at the end of January 2025.
Thank you very much.
It should be the last Wednesday of January 2025.
Okay. There is a home next door to 3787 Bakers Ferry Road that's plagued us for several years. And once we get it taken care of, they seem to come back. They have, right now, they have about four covered vehicles, tables in the front yard, and chairs. Director Tally?
Yes. So that was a part of that detail that was performed last Monday on October 21st. And so you're absolutely right, they were in court, the entire family. I think they're two properties next to each other. They were in court on last year, and so we're in the process of reissuing citations to bring them back for those code violations.
Okay.
And we'll update your office once the citations are served.
Okay, my last two concerns, which Director, I know you handle these yourself, Pamela Co. Drive and Linfield Drive. If you could just get back with me on those.
I will.
Those cars are covered.
Correct.
Also, I ran into a lady at Publix, and she is still concerned about Pamela Co., Pamela Co. Drive, Linfield, and Braymar Avenue.
Okay. Yeah, those are all a part of the detail last, last Monday.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
So first, I want to say thank you and the team for all the work you've been doing on School Drive. Eagles Nest, Eagles Nest Church, they've been reaching out to me and just lauding, lauding as much support they can for your department. So School Drive, the 484 and 498, it made the entire area look much better just when you did that. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
The, the, I see it on your list right now, but the Hutchins Road, there's, I know it's been awarded, but if you can, just keep me as updated as you can on the updates on the Hutchins, 595 Hutchins Road.
Yes.
As much as possible.
Okay.
Heritage Station, which is in Pittsburgh, I've been getting a lot of complaints about things going on at Heritage Station. I never mentioned that in here before, but I would like for you all to start looking at Heritage Station. And lastly, I was looking for an address for Springside Apartments on Macon Drive. We have trees growing through some of the apartments right now.
Wait, is that the vacant lot? I mean, I'm sorry, the vacant apartments?
They're not really vacant, right? And so some of them are, it looks like it's vacant. It's three different drives on Macon Drive, they're called.
Oh, 2805.
Yes.
Macon Drive.
But it's three of them, right?
Yes.
And so now, it's gotten to the point to where you got oaks that have grown out of some of them.
Right.
If there's any kind of, I know it's different because some of them are owned by some folks, but.
Right, right. That, it's been on our radar for quite some time. We, we had taken it through the administrative interim proceedings, but held off because some were occupied. We had the Office of Buildings join us on an inspection out there, so we're exploring other avenues. The administrative interim process is probably not the best route to take 2805 Macon Drive, so we're looking at some other, other avenues to proceed.
And if, because I know just how bad some of them are. So it's, it's so weird, because of how it's been, it's been like that for about 30 years now.
For a long time.
So, but I remember when people used to live in all of them. It won't get better. So I think that there has to be a chance, there has to be a conversation like, like we did for Thomasville, Forest Cove.
Mm-hmm.
Has to be a conversation about, probably about 30 people live out there total.
Right, right.
And so it's, if there has to start becoming a conversation. So if we can, let's re-engage, if we can.
Mm-hmm.
If, thank you.
Both of them.
Officer Lous, thank you. Please stand. Thank you for all of your hard work. Let's give her a hand. She does a great job.
She does.
Thank you very much. We have been joined by the Honorable Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, who has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for your presentation today. I just wanted to make you aware of some issues along Commercial Drive there between, I think it's Old No and Baker Road. And I don't have the addresses, but the conditions are obvious. There's a legal chop shop operating there, several yards with, I believe, vehicles and other violations. There are a lot of seniors who live along that street who kind of feel paralyzed by the activities associated with the chop shop, loud music, there's, I don't want to say wild animals, but there are loose canines rife up and down the street. So they need someone to go out there and take a look. It's on the backside of the, the, the specific addresses are on the backside of the old, I think it's Old Hagerbrooks Academy, there on what would be Hamilton Holmes Drive, but they are but the back of that property.
Okay.
And so all along there, I mean, there's just noise violations, things that have been going on, and the seniors are very concerned.
Okay. We'll schedule a detail.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all for your responsiveness and good work. Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, this takes us to our consent agenda. May we have a motion to approve our favorable claims?
Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The favorable claims have been approved. Madam Chair, we need a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims.
Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The unfavorable claims have been adverse. This takes us to Section H ordinance for the first reading. Item number 12401598, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, waiving Division 4 of Chapter 2, Article 10, B. Cameron, Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, to authorize the mayor as designated on behalf of the Department of Corrections to execute a retroactive extension of contract number listed herein, inmate commissary and trust fund services with Key Commissary Network LLC from September 1, 2020 through October 31, 2024, to ratify and retroactively authorize the receipt of any service provided by the contractor to the city of Atlanta and to ratify and retroactively authorize a payment therefore by the city of Atlanta to the contractor from September 1, 2020 and October 31, 2024, to authorize the mayor as designated to execute a six-month extension of the agreement with the contractor from November 1, 2024 through April 30 of 2025 in amount not to exceed $270,000.00. All contracted work will be charged and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Council Number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 2, 2401599, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor as designated to accept a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agencies, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Funding Opportunity on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, in amount of $272,727.27 for the support of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department and the purchase of personal rescue bailout systems and for other purposes. Item number 3, 2401600, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor as designated on behalf of the city of Atlanta and the Department of Parks and Recreation to retroactively reinstate agreement listed herein, on-call, post-certified officers with Cloverhurst-Aaron joint venture to enter into the first window option for one year, commencing on November 1, 2024 and ending on October 31, 2025, in amount not to exceed $1,500,000.00, to continue providing security needs at various parks and recreation sites, to waive all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to ratify all action taken by or on behalf of the city since the date of the expiration of the agreement and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, Section I ordinance for second reading. Madam Chair, can we take items 4, 6 through AS together as a block? There is no objection from, from the committee?
Please proceed.
The recommendation is to hold these items for further ATAG discussions. Let me sound the caption. Item number 4, 2401568, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amis to amend Chapter 74, Article 4, Noise Control, Sections 74-131 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, to clarify that the prohibitions contained therein apply to noise generated from mechanical sound-making devices located outdoor areas of eating and drinking establishments and for other purposes. Item number 6, 2401578, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wong to amend Chapter 10 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances and for other purposes. Item number 7, 2401579, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wong to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-11 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, to repeal the regulations regulated to amplify sound and entertainment on any patio, deck, or in any other outdoor or open eating or drinking area on the premises of the establishment license for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises and for other purposes. Item number 8, 2401580, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wong to amend Chapter 10 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, to provide business clarifications, classifications for the purpose of license application and issuance, and to eliminate lounge as a classification to amend Chapter 10, Section 10-48, to acknowledge newly created business classification section to amend Chapters 10-13, 10-48, 10-60, 10-62, 10-220, and 10-228, to eliminate references to lounge and for other purposes.
Motion to hold by the Honorable Amir Farroki, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? One moment. Will everyone please vote? Vote is still open. The vote is closed. Five yays, one nay. These items are held to committee. This takes us back to Section, item number 5, 2401571. Madam Chair, this item requires a substitute. The substitute also changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Moved by the Honorable Mary Norwood, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yays, zero nays. The substitute's before you. The substitute attaches Exhibit A and incorporates the account information and increases the maximum interest rate component to 5% and the term of the agreement is eight years. Item number 24, no, sorry, 2401571, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boom, substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, an ordinance authorizing the mayor as designated to execute a secured equipment financing agreement with Regions Capital Advantage Incorporated or an affiliated thereof to provide the city's acquisition of 11 fire trucks on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, provided that the principal component shall be in amount not to exceed $17,900,000.00, authorized, authorized the chief financial officer. shall be in amount not to exceed $17,900,000.00, since authorized the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2025 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations and for other related purposes.
Question?
Well, I'll second Mr. Bond's motion. Is anyone here to speak to this paper? Seems like something worth discussing in public or private, but public.
I was, I had put my name in to speak previously.
That's why you got called on.
That's why I got called on. If we'd like to discuss it, I'm willing to withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to know that after lots of concerns about the equipment...
But this is about 11 fire trucks, public safety?
I don't think.
Motion, a second on the floor. I'm, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'll speak to the motion. This is about 11 fire trucks.
Right.
That after much discussion, the city is finally acquiring 11 fire trucks moving forward to help supplement our fleet, and I guess there really isn't anyone from the administration or the fire department to speak to this, but for those members of the public, it is a huge deal.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
This is the city council doing their job. This is us hearing the public, understanding that the city needed some more fire trucks, understanding where we got elected at, and understanding that we had to be intentional about doing our job. So today, us getting 11 fire trucks for the City of Atlanta, $17 million spent to make sure that our people are taken care of. That's where it, this is the city council doing their job, and so we move, approve, I'm ready to vote.
The Honorable Amir Farroki?
Yeah, I think would be helpful, just for context, I think, I'm sure we're all in favor of this, this is overdue, is a timeline for delivery on the trucks that these, the trucks and engines that these funds will purchase. That would just be helpful before we vote at full council next Monday.
Mr. Bond?
Well, I'd also like to add my name to this.
Me as well. So, so, so I move to add my name to this, so that's doing our job.
Second, in mind.
He wants to withdraw our initial motions.
We will get information before the November 4 meeting, but we would like to pass this today.
Let's add my name, let's keep going.
Madam Chair, can you repeat the mover and seconder on the amendment for the co-sponsors?
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland.
We got another motion to add names.
Yes, that's...
I want to add mine. And Mr. Lewis wants to add here, and Mr. Farroki.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yays, zero nays. Amendment passes. The motion should be to approve on substitute as amended.
Seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yays, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute as amended. This takes us to Section J Resolutions. Item number 9, 24R4421, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement listed herein, inmate pharmacy services utilizing purchasing solutions alliance contract number listed herein with correct RX Pharmacy Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Corrections in amount not to exceed $120,000.00 annually for the purchase of pharmacy goods for services for detainees housed at the Atlanta City Detention Center, all contracted work will be charged and paid from the Fund Department and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Move approval?
Second.
Seconded by the Honorable Matt, the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yays, zero nays. This item is favorable. Madam Chair, there is no objection from the committee. Can we take items 10 through 12 together as a block? These are all for settlement legislation.
Please proceed.
Item number 10, 24R4422, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Cassandra Thomas versus City of Atlanta Department of Watershed Equal Employment Opportunity Commission charge of discrimination, charge number listed herein in amount of $5,000.00, authorizing settlement to be charged and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 11, 24R4423, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of the City of Atlanta versus Tanya Pittman Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the Superior Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in amount of $2,100.00 authorized in settlement amount to be charged and paid from the council listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. Item number 12, 24R4424, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Bertina White versus City of Atlanta and the Department of Watershed Management Civil Action Number, Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County in amount of $19,000.00 authorized in settlement to be charged and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes.
Move approval? Seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
Claire, we're approving all of these, right?
Yes.
None of these are adverse.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yays, zero nays. These items are favorable. Madam Chair, that concludes our agenda for today.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the body? If not, this meeting is adjourned.